Yeah, the 6:30 time, we certainly don't go as late, but we always start like three minutes late. Because we're all coming from work. Okay, guys. You ready to roll, Dan?
Yes, sir.
You're good? I'll set you in. Okay. All right, so we will call the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, September 20th, 2017, to order at 6:33 PM. We will begin with a roll call from the City Clerk.
Commissioner Gurek, Azar, Martin.
Here.
Brazen.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Farr. Cassiel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
And Baker.
Here. We knew that Commissioners Gurek, Azar, and Farr were going to be absent. Is there a motion to excuse their absence?
Motion to excuse.
Thank you. That was a motion from Commissioner Brazen with a second by Councilman Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That motion passes. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda from the Commission or the City staff?
I will accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. That is a motion from Councilman Martin with a second from Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. That motion passes as well. We will now move on to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to review. Is there any discussion on the minutes from August 2nd, 2017? Any corrections? If not, a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 2nd, 2017 discussion meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That was a motion from Commissioner Brazen with a second from Commissioner Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any, uh... Why have I not got a word? Thank you. Opposed or abstentions? Thank you. That motion passes. Next, we'll take a look at the minutes from the August 16th regular meeting.
I will accept the minutes of August 16th.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion from Councilman Martin with a second from Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you very much. That motion passes. Next would be our call to audience. This is a time for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission on anything not on the agenda tonight. So the item on the agenda tonight is the planned unit development, the parking structure at West Troy Street. There's a public hearing on that. But if there was anyone here who wanted to address the Commission on a different topic, you can do so at this time for three minutes. Okay. No call to audience. We'll move right on to our item of business. We have a public hearing on the agenda tonight for the planned unit development for the West Troy Street parking deck. We will move through this process with our City staff first giving an update. Then I'll open the public comment. The public will direct all questions and comments to the Planning Commission. We'll then close the public comment and consider those questions and comments referring to the applicant or the city for answers as needed. So let's begin the presentation from the City and then we'll move into the public hearing.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good evening. So this is a little bit unique in that staff was reviewing a site plan for a city-owned property, but I'll kind of start off, go through the staff report that was in the packet, just some of the highlights there. Assistant City Manager Joe Gacho will talk about some of the changes and meetings we had with fire and police and some of those items that were talked about at the last PUD preliminary discussion item. And then Fusco Schaefer-Pappas has some slides as well. I'm not sure if you want to go through that before or after the public hearing. But essentially, just for those in the audience that may not be familiar with the process, so for PUDs, planned unit development agreements and special land use motions, the Planning Commission reviews that item as we are tonight through a public hearing and then should it move forward with a recommendation, the Planning Commission makes the recommendation to City Council and so City Council would be the final adopting body moving forward. But getting into the specifics of the staff report, so obviously we're here for to talk about 221 West Troy Street. The subject property is city-owned. Central Business District is the zoning district, currently 138 off-street parking spaces. And we've obviously talked about this site quite a bit throughout the master plan process. Parking steering committees, design steering committees had an input session at the Rust Belt on June 6th that was well-attended and heard some great feedback there. And then most recently, we had a discussion for preliminary planned unit development application meeting on August 2nd. Heard a lot of great feedback from residents and business owners and the Planning Commission raised some concerns, everything from utilities to security. And so some of those items have been addressed in the packet and then Assistant City Manager will go through those as well. So since that time, staff has just looked through the site plans in the middle, going through ordinance, looking at planning to development requirements, special land use, specific requirements to parking structures, so I'll just go through those briefly. Essentially, just as a reminder, the proposed parking structure, it's permitted as a special land used in this zoning district. The proposed uses are all permitted, aside from the parking, the others are permitted by right. The structure also aligns with the requirements in the transit overlay district, including the building height and the front setback as well. This was, the site was specifically mentioned in the master plan as a key redevelopment site. And so that kind of pushed forth a number of the community discussions that we've had over the past few months. So though a planned unit development's not required, the project team thought that, you know, this was the appropriate process for this, just due to the number of different types of uses happening here that are proposed, the phasing for the future, the considerable public improvements that are part of that. So I won't go through all 12 of the benefits that a PUD should be required, but we did discuss a number of those at the last meeting, everything from pedestrian and transit-oriented development to sustainable building and design and a number of a mixture of uses. So there's a, the current proposal reviewed by staff is for a cohesive project with some potential phasing scenarios. The City is committed to specifically the parking portion and the ground-level commercial space. You know, there is opportunity in the future for upper-level office and multiple-family on the west side of the project. That could happen concurrently, could happen later. But right now, essentially, why we chose to do a PUD is because we wanted to specify whatever happens for those future phases, we want to specify height, materials, number of units, square footage, things like that. So that's built into the PUD agreement that was in your packet. Other than, generally, it aligns with the ordinance for parking structures, general site plan requirements. The one deviation that's proposed in this site plan is to have normally two off-street loading spaces would be required, staff's, or applicants proposing a loading zone that is, would be on the north side of West Troy Street, wider than what exists there. Ultimately, that would have to be also approved by City Council because it is city right-of-way, but that is one, the only deviation that's listed from, for the ordinances regarding parking structures. So just getting into the meat of the site plan review, so 397 parking spaces are proposed for the development, 122 lower level, and then 118 second, 120 on the third, and then on the top floor, fourth floor, 37 spaces. Just to reiterate, the highest level of parking that would be available would be on the fourth floor. Those parking spaces meet all the requirements as far as parking space size, number of ADA spaces, maneuvering lanes, general circulation. Bike parking has been addressed with two different bike parking spaces within the site. We talked a lot at the last meeting about circulation on, coming to and from the parking deck, so that there are three ingress egress lands that would be located northeast on the development. Those do have the ability to change direction based on traffic circulation, so during peak hour, we can, we have the technology to be able to swap those to get traffic efficiently in and out of the parking deck. That was also discussed throughout the traffic study that was presented by Otis, or Opus as well. Pedestrians have some open access to the center lobby and then also at each end with two stairwells. Aside from that, circulation-wise, we're talking about a shared street concept for West Troy that would be incorporated into this project, essentially aligning with a lot of our goals from the City's complete streets ordinance and making sure that that street is safe for all ages, all ages and abilities. Obviously, it still will remain two-way traffic for vehicles, but barrier-free access would be an amenity for pedestrians, improved crosswalks, decorative concrete pavers to provide some variety on the, for the asphalt surface, and then also landscape improvements along the way. I'm sure Dan will get into more of this, but the alley south of the project would also be included in the improvements, improved with some sustainable elements as well as just making the circulation a bit more predictable, considering that right now there's cars backing in and out, going different ways, garages adjacent, with garages facing the alley as well. Regarding building design, like I mentioned, the height requirements are met for this project whether it goes to a second phase or not. Front yard setback, the transit oriented TOD overlay requires zero feet, so this project aligns with that. The other elevations meet that as well. Essentially, building materials align with what we look for as part of the downtown and specified in the downtown appearance review ordinance related to glass elements, providing visibility should there be future retail on the ground floor, as well as the office. It also provides that safety that I think was brought up in many of the meetings that people were looking for. This is probably the most detailed elevations that you'll see with color and all the material, building materials being noted. One thing we looked at specifically was on the fourth floor where there are those 37 parking spaces, you know, making sure that vehicle lights would be shielded, so there's a four-foot parapet there that would block those from spilling over into the neighborhood. There's also some metal, perforated metal panelling that would be included as well. And then, obviously, there's not a specific development that's for the upper-level office yet, but future rooftop mechanical materials would have to be specified as part of that project, so that would be, you'll notice that in the conditions for the future as well. Utilities were talked about a lot at previous meetings, so there's a storage area, essentially the southeast portion of the development, that includes some ventilation exhaust and then water meters, but making sure of that is screened, it's not a place where people can hang out and smoke cigarettes or cause trouble. That was a key feedback from the last meeting. Landscaping, there's a different ordinance regarding parking structures and the trees that are required there. This development's providing 13 trees on Troy and then five on Allen Road, that's more than required by ordinance, also adding some shrubs and then trumpet vines that would be on the backside of the alley to provide some variety, but also green space for those looking north as well. Lighting is something we always look at as part of site plans. There's kind of a variety of different light fixtures. I won't get too far into that, but generally foot candles is what we look at and make sure that there's not light spilling onto adjacent neighbors, so the ordinance requires a maximum of .1 foot candles and this plan meets that. Lastly, waste receptacles that, you know, obviously on-site right now, it's kind of an unscreened situation, that's shared by multiple businesses, so that would be improved with a trash collection room at the northeast corner of the dot. Obviously, more details on the operation of that would be figured out in coordination with the business owners, but recycling would be included, there would be kind of a rollout curb, curbside pickups situation, and that's kind of setback, so, you know, if you are driving or walking along West Troy, it's not going to be an immediate thing that jumps out to you, it'll still be setback a bit. But only those who have certified access would have access to that, obviously. Aside from that, that's just the general site plan review. Parking structures, not quite as exciting from a review standpoint, but exciting as a development standpoint, so happy to answer any planned unit development questions or any of those as we go along.
Great, thanks.
All right.
Are there any other updates from the City, from our Assistant City Manager or the consultants?
Commissioner, I will just provide a brief update on the supplemental materials. So during the August 2nd meeting, the Commission had received some comments from residents and businesses concerning elements outside of the pre-PUD. Most of them could be highlighted around topics concerning the water system, questions about the water system and the impact that the future land use would have on the water system. So we met with the City's Water Engineer and the Department of Public Works and we got a assessment from the Water Engineering in terms of the impact on the water system. I included a report in the packet from the Water Engineering Department on that. We did meet with the Public Works Department and the Fire Department at that meeting and it was confirmed that the land use would have minimal impact on the City's water system. The water system has a considerable ability to support the future development. There was also questions from a public safety perspective, so we met with members of the Police Department and Fire Department on a few different items. One of those items was the pedestrian cut-through. I don't know if you recall, during the minutes, resident made a comment with concerns about the pedestrian cut-through possibly providing exposure for criminal activity if unmanned. So the Police Chief and the Captain did review that and they offered an opinion. They did voice some expression of concern about possible criminal activity for the pedestrian cut-through, and I think that was conveyed to the City Planner during the site plan review process. And the architect team will walk through that during their presentation in terms of changes. We also asked them to just do an initial assessment of the rear alley. That was a concern in terms of criminal activity opportunities, and they would like to see some call boxes back there as well as be involved with some surveillance. Surveillance was included in the initial budget and they would be involved in terms of consulting on those locations and they would be involved in terms of having access to those feeds. We met several times and for a preliminary traffic control plan, members for those meetings included the Fire Department, the Department of Public Works, the Water Department, the DDA, as well as members of the project team and the City Manager's Office. We held a couple of meetings and we have some good concepts that we have proposed. I included that in my packet as well. The leading recommendation right now is leaning towards technology and signalization in terms of controlling the outbound and inbound traffic towards the West Troy entrance and then looking at using signalization, I think the Police Chief was recommending towards the Woodward-West Troy entrance, to indicate to drivers who are coming towards West Troy on Woodward whether the parking deck would be full or not. So tying that in, using technology to the actual parking deck capacity, which we can do using smart technology devices. So we had our technology consultant attend those meetings as well, so he confirmed that that's available and that's kind of an industry-standard thing too. So it's very achievable and it's achievable within the budget as well. And then from a sustainability perspective, I know that's a question, how would we approach sustainability? We had approached the question of whether we could approach this project in terms of LEED. It is our understanding that LEED is no longer eligible in terms of parking decks. They've changed the standard and now it's, there's a ParkSmart certification standard. We have a new sustainability planner, Aaron, I already forgot it again, Quatell, Aaron Quatell. I butchered that again, I'm pretty sure. And Aaron will be leading the ParkSmart certification pursuit on behalf of the project team of the City. But ParkSmart is nice because it takes a holistic approach in terms of sustainability on behalf of the project, so it doesn't just look at specifically stormwater, our approach to tree management, but also it takes into account operations and how we include just the entire administrative approach to the deck as well. So it really includes everything. So Aaron's going to be heading up how we manage the ParkSmart certification, how we pursue that. But establishing that that is core to how we pursue moving forward on this project at this point is fundamental to our success in actually achieving certification. So that's all included in the support, or in the report. And that is all the staff has in terms of comments. I'm certainly open for questions before we give way to the project team to provide updates.
Before we get to the next step, there were also a number of questions last time about communications planning.
Sure.
Is that something that the project team would update on? Or you, I'm sure we're going to get them again tonight, so if you've got an update...
Sure, we can provide an update on that. So the City has completed its preliminary communications plan. The communications plan is largely contingent upon the approvals process in terms of the project and the project timeline. So in that sense, what the communications plan in terms of release dates are set upon approvals process. However, we have presented a preliminary business communications concept to the DDA board and to the Ferndale Chamber, so we presented the business communications release points to those two entities. And we expect the first round of content to be released by the DDA to the businesses on September 25th. And that is just a preliminary touchpoint that I think the phrase that the DDA used was "winter is coming," which is pulled from the Game of Thrones, it's just, hey, this project is coming, just a reminder, this project is coming, it's out there, that all the details may not be clear yet because the approvals process is still in play, but just a heads up, the car's moving forward and here's where all the resources are.
I may, the chair, does that include communications on the mitigation plan or is that a separate piece?
That includes some high-level communications in terms of what efforts are being done for mitigation. So to that point, I could just go ahead and give a brief update on what's being done in terms of mitigation.
That'd be great.
Briefly, sure. So on June 26th, and I had mentioned this during the previous meeting, but I'll just mention it again, City Council did approve the downtown valet to support the project. We again are committed to working to introduce the downtown valet no less than 60 days prior to the groundbreaking. At this point, groundbreaking again is contingent on the approvals process because we can't get design documents out for bid until we get the approvals completed, so there's really a timeline friction there. But once we get the approvals process, we'll better understand when we can get that downtown valet underway. However, we are going to initiate the planning phase with StarTrax, who is the awarded vendor. That is, the scheduling for that is underway with them, so we're working on, through the initial planning phase. The communications plan has been completed. We actually are going to launch a specific microsite for the website that is associated with communications plan. We have hyper-local marketing that we've engaged, that will be pushing out notifications to patrons and guests who visit downtown, so if you're downtown, you will be alerted to parking updates and resource updates onto your smartphone, perhaps if you're doing some searching online downtown during the, a certain period before and during construction. These are all the efforts that were, that are being undertaken to support communications, to support this project.
Thank you for that.
We are also currently still searching for shared parking agreement opportunities out there to locate a service lot that we could lease at or near the downtown for a good duration.
Thank you. I think we've got one other update from the project consultants in the public hearing, or am I incorrect?
Um...
There's, I mean, there's something on the screen and I don't know what it is.
That's the actual presentation for tonight when...
Oh, for after the public hearing?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
You don't, okay, you don't want to do it, okay.
What are you referring?
I typically like to get as much information out as possible because you often answer some questions in that process.
Yep, yep.
Or you generate more questions. So if we could get sort of the presentation from the, from the City, I guess not knowing what's in the presentation, it's a little bit hard for me to gauge.
It's still part of the process.
It's still part of the process, so why don't we go ahead and begin the presentation? This is Blake Hatterman from Fusco Schaefer-Pappas.
Okay.
They are the City's architect.
Okay.
For the project team and he'll go ahead and walk us through.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Like I said, it often either clarifies or generates new questions, so...
Sure, absolutely. No?
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. This is a wonderful client. Good evening, Council. It's a pleasure to come before you. We've had a lot of discussion about this project over the last year and it's a pleasure to present our progress tonight. What I'd like to do is walk you through our design concept, some of the materials that we're thinking, some of the massing that we're thinking, and then show you some vignette images that show you how we're applying those ideas to the building and the project. And if at any time you guys have any questions, please feel free to stop me, ask me questions. I would prefer this be a little bit more fluid. I think we're all familiar with the metrics based on our site plan approval package, just quickly. We're proposing a five-story building, multiple uses, residential, office, retail, parking, 397 spaces. Our underlying design concepts for the project are assigning materials that help to accentuate the uses, applying and then applying those materials appropriately based on the juxtaposition of what the uses are next to them. Other ideas regarding the project are, we're looking at materials that are durable, they all have integral finish, and then we soften that a little bit as we come back off of the building where pedestrians actually interface with the building. Couple of elevations. An update on the building massing is that we've taken a second look at the rear of the building, which would be the top two floors of the office development. We've significantly reduced the amount of glazing on that side of the building in response to residents' concerns regarding views into the neighborhood. So we've taken the liberty of applying some of the materials from the front of the building in a pattern on the back with a combination of some precast concrete, metal, and glazing to tie those, tie the design together. This building is designed four sides. We've paid great attention to trying to define each of the, each of the planes of the building to the best that we can based on the use. Is there a way we can bump this slide up? Is that just a function of the scroll? There we go, perfect. It's a touchscreen. Let's get right into it. Our concept for the materials for the retail and the office are that there's a lot of glazing. We think that that helps engage the street front, gives a lot of visibility to the retail. It also gives the office a great view to the, to the surrounding views of the city. Those two things, or those two uses are joined together by a continuous precast band that translates around the facade. And another item to note also is that at the office entrance, that material translates up the facade, so those are directly tied together throughout the whole facade. And I wanted to reiterate also at this time is that we did design this deck to not have the office component if for some reason that that didn't move forward. We think, we're confident that it will, but the design is able to stand alone with parking and just the retail on the first floor. This image also gives you an idea of what closing the street for the shared street might look like on any given day. This is a farmer's market that we have shown, it could be any number of different things, whatever the City, however the City wants to use that. I'm just going to use this, I think. This is a similar image that doesn't show the, doesn't show the fair, the farmer's market, but it also shows the temporary park that we'll have at the edge.
Are those string lights? Are those string lights?
Yes, we are thinking that the, an advantage to doing a shared street is to, is to take that design element and, and provide a cover, a permanent cover across the street. Those would be, those wouldn't be seasonal. Those would be up all the time. So those would create the presence for the shared street and help cap that off. A view looking down Troy. Again, you can see, start to see the articulation of the, of the materials. We've chosen a light-colored precast concrete for a majority of the banding. Obviously, the glass is what it is. And then we've, and what that does is it helps lighten the mass of the building a little bit because it is, you know, relatively tall compared to the surroundings. And then we've taken the structural elements and accentuated those to help accentuate the articulation by providing a little bit darker color and a little bit darker alternative material for the perforated metal that helps shield the view of the cars and people that are in the deck from the people that are on the streets and on the residential side. The stairwells and elevators are all glass back to promote safety. And that material would be the same that we would use on the residential and the office. This shows another view looking down the street. And again, towards the back. The back, again, we have green screen elements that helps soften the development from the residential with the perforated metal panels between that to assist in limiting the visibility while still maintaining an open parking structure. This is the same view without the residential development on the end. There are some treatments that we'll have to do in the interim before that development would be built in the event that that's not phased directly after our project. So we would continue the perforated metal and the green screens around that side to tie the park idea up, up the facade of the building. This gives you an idea of, of what you'll be seeing as you look down the alley with regard to the green screens, the panels perforate, or not perforated, but permeable pavers, the development of the residential fences along the residential property side. What it also does is it gives you an idea of what we're thinking of in terms of lighting on the alley. One of the things I'd like to point out is that we're anticipating more light fixtures in the alley, but at a reduced height. Those are also adjustable so that we can try and shield the light sources from the residential properties as much as possible, keep that down below the fence line where it, where it hits that side of the property. Public safety is also suggested that we have security call stations at, at both ends of the, both ends of the alley. And this gives you an idea of what we're thinking about for our public plaza. This does include the residential development and we're still kicking around a lot of ideas about what that could be potentially on the first floor. One of the ideas that we've been kicking around is that that glass corner that would be the entry to a residential development might end up being a community space, an art gallery, something like that, that might lend itself to who the tenants might be for that development. But it also gives you an idea of how we're starting to pull some of the materials off the building. We would have some concrete planters. However, we didn't want an austere concrete planter. All the materials on the, on the deck being pretty solid, durable. We wanted something a little bit different where the public interfaces with those, with the elements where they would be sitting and help define where they're going to sit with some wood elements. A lot of the wood elements that we see nowadays, the moisture is baked out of them, they're a little bit more dense, rot resistant and so forth. And by juxtaposing those closer to the building, we help define people sitting away from the street as, as when traffic would be translating back and forth through there. And we, and you can also see the shared street, how that helps to, that paving pattern helps to define the plaza. That paving pattern is directly proportional to the column spacing of the building. So again, we're taking our design from the facade of the building and translating that back onto the site that, so those two are directly tied together. Here's a good idea of what the retail storefront might look like. We're thinking floor-to-ceiling glass so that you really have the maximum visibility for the retailers there. We also have a, a glass canopy planned with an articulated metal structure. We would hang signs and lighting and so forth from that. And again, you can see the, the translations of the benches as they progress down the, down the street front. One of the items I'd like to point out about the planters is that we have angled the front of the planter to discourage people from sitting close to the street. So the device of having the, the wood bench definition of where to sit and the angled front helps promote safety in that respect. We are thinking that the light fixtures are going to be a little bit more contemporary in terms of their style. This particular one that we've selected does a little bit of a double duty. It has a high light that lights the street on one side. It pulls light onto one side and on the pedestrian side, excuse me, there's a pedestrian scale light that's more at a Ballard height so that you're lighting the spaces appropriately, you're not overlighting. So you're relying on the building lighting, the street lighting, and the pedestrian lighting to, to do their, to, to function together. And I would also, we've also discussed having landscape lighting, uplighting the trees and so forth to, to help define the, the feeling of the street front. We wanted to define the entry to the office a little bit differently than we would articulate the, the canopy for the retail. So we've raised that up. We're going to add a little bit of extra structure there that might translate into the building. You would be able to hang your ceiling and lighting and, and some sort of element that sort of helps define the lobby from that. And it gives it an improved presence, sort of a wayfinding. We also have a, a larger gathering space because we recognize that there will be more people coming in and out of that and mixing together in that location. There's also opportunity, if the city wanted to do so in the future, for public, like a public art installation at that location and at the plaza as well. This gives you a good idea of what you would see towards the entry of the deck. You can see the articulation of the planters, how they help start to define the retail storefront and, and provide a bit of a barrier between pedestrians and the street. You can see that, again, the paving pattern as it relates to the, the structure of the building. And you can see the, the entry to the deck, the portal. Three lanes, center lane would be an enter at some point of the day. It could be an exit at some point of the day depending on what the, what the load is for that. And this is probably the least attractive slide, but it gives you an idea of what the trash enclosure might look like. You can see that it's pushed substantially back off the street. We'll have an attractive as possible door. We'll let some natural light into there so it's not a cave. And you can see the juxtaposition of the glazing and some of the other materials that we're using in terms of a cast-in-place wall to help the durability of that location as well. And I didn't want to end on that slide, so we have another slide to, to show you again as we started. We'll, we'll end with how we started. Do you, do you have any questions?
Actually, I'm going to hold questions up here because I want to open the public hearing.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. All right. I'll now open our public hearing. This is a chance for the public to ask questions and offer comments on this project. Please direct all comments to the planning commission and limit comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record and be sure to sign in, in back as well. That's one of the ways the city works to keep in touch with people interested on different topics. We'll take all of the public comment and question, then we'll close the public hearing. The commission will deliberate and we'll probably have to turn some questions back over to the, the city as well because they may be outside of our purview. So we will open at 7:12. We'll open the public hearing. Welcome.
My name is Martha Subliner. I own 163 through 171 West Nine Mile and have for 30 years. My first question is possibly to the architect, but to you. What thinking and consideration has been given to the tenants that are currently there as you go through whatever part of this process you go through? I think it's very important. There won't be parking for their clients. Where will the people park who are working on the project? I think there's a lot of concern about that. I wasn't clear from what I heard. Is there, is there a public plaza being instituted in this first part of the project or not?
Good question.
It, it was unclear about what was going on. Is that considered part two or the second phase or the first phase? Because my original understanding of this project at all was that it was for parking, that the city needs parking. I didn't know that the city wanted to be a landlord. And I'm leery about all the things I hear that seem to grow up off of this initial parking concept. I'm concerned, well, I'm concerned for myself, but I'm concerned for everyone else on the street. And I'm concerned that there be a human quality that remains to that part of Ferndale and not high-rise city. I, I don't know about anyone else, but I don't want to be Royal Oak. I have had customers who came in when they were four and now they come in when they're 24. And they still like coming back to this one-story store that sells books, not technology, but real books, as they like many of the other businesses on the street that are not high-tech. Hold on one second. That's as far as I could get in one swoop.
That's all right. There's, there's not a big line. Take your time, Martha.
I never saw anything about an environmental assessment. Has there one, has there been one done? And, and how, what are the parameters of that? Does that, does that take into account how all of the businesses on the street are going to be affected by all the hoopla that will be going on? What, what, not danger, but what health concerns will any of the businesses have with all the construction that will be going on, all the traffic? Not of people who are coming to the street to see the businesses, but working on the street. How will that affect people and the businesses there, let alone people walking on the street? And I'm wondering what larger concept is in mind about who's really supposed to benefit from this? I mean, is it a tiered response? Well, first people who are parking, then, then what? I mean, I would like to see that or hear that responded to in some way, if I'm being at all clear about asking the question. I mean, again, I thought this was for parking, but it has bloomed into a lot of other things. And I'm leery, I'm very leery of a kind of grandiosity that may not be in line with what people who work there and use the street want to see. So, and I don't think I'd ever heard about a farmer's market. So I realize not everything can say the same. In my own store, I still call in charges where everyone else in the room, in this, in the world, uses another form. And that I'll probably have to change at some point. And yet, the people who walk, the people who come into these frequently one-story buildings for what the hard work that has been put into them by individual owners, not by corporate everything, I want those people and those owners to be kept strongly in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Garaboy Ajin. I live at 376 West Saratoga. So I just had some questions. Pavers look nice and when they're new, they look nice, but after a while, as I see, they fall apart. Are these like special pavers that when like trucks are going over them, they're not going to fall apart right away or do they eventually have to have stamped concrete?
I have the same question, Gar.
Another question was, I think, from the last meeting as well. You have the residential built. I think there was a question as to, you have the offset, I forget what it is, like 60 feet for the office building? Was that going to match? I don't know if that has to be written into the PUD. I don't know if that comes later still.
Okay.
I think someone on the commission had that in mind as well. And also, again, about a terrace on top, not having people up there. And also from the last time, I had a question about the sewers and I think someone was going to look into that too and give us more information.
In terms of the type of stores?
Something about when they were going to tie it into the ones that are already existing and look into it and see that there was nothing wrong and good, good capacity was-
Oh, the storms. I'm sorry, I thought you said stores. The storm sewers?
Oh, yeah. Well, sewer, yeah, storm. I heard, I remember there was a retention ability of the water before, but they were still going to use the same sewer line. So that was my question.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I've just got a few questions. And these questions may have been already asked and answered. The first one is, have all the brownfield issues been addressed for this site? Also, are there any smart elements or smart building elements being used in this project such as embedded Wi-Fi or anything connected to utilities? I only ask this question because of a concern for cybersecurity for this particular building and anything surrounding it. Also, were there ever any core samples taken of the site to get a view of the underlying soil profile, the clay layer, if there's any clay layer underneath that soil profile? And how far does it go down to the bedrock? I only ask this question because of, this is a large structure and you don't want any Just something, you know, for you to think about.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jaye Spyro. I live at 405 West Breckenridge and I own Michishi Martial Arts at 247 West Nine Mile.
Welcome.
So I'd like to piggyback on the pavers question. They look beautiful, but this is a loading zone. Huge, huge vehicles are there and congestion is there every day when they come because I'm on the block. And I'm, I'm really concerned with the kind of prettiness of it compared to the practicality. And to talk more about the loading zone, on page four, you- On page four, you say, "Loading zones for existing businesses will be consolidated to the north of West Troy Street that could possibly be used as 11 to 12 on-street parking spaces during the afternoon and evening hours." This is a huge safety issue for me and my community. Children are dropped off, including teenagers, from the hours of 4:30 to 9 o'clock at night. If those, if there is no loading zone and those turn into parking spaces, how are parents gonna collect those children? I, I think that you are going to be absolutely inundated with negativity from the parents of my community if you change those 12, 11 or 12 spaces to make them into parking spaces for people to go to restaurants and bars in the evening. And I think that that would be a huge mistake. I'd like to address what Martha raised about parking mitigation. For those businesses on Nine Mile, you're talking 15 months with that fence up and no parking. And I don't know where the construction people are gonna park. And you've got a valet, that's parking mitigation. That is not going to help most of us very much. And I know your DDA is supposed to be handling it. And I'm looking forward to, and hopefully on the 25th, hearing that something besides, that there's a split place for people to park. And then walk in to the businesses that are there. Because the businesses that are there are really your mom and pop businesses. And we've been there a long time. And many of us are ve, this is a huge crisis for us, which I, I think needs to be addressed and taken seriously, that we're gonna be losing parking. And for it to start in January, that fence goes up and then what? The bad weather hits and there's no parking? And the bad weather's there and they can't do any construction until when, March? I mean, look at that timeline and make sure that when you start it, when you put that fence up and we all lose our parking. And I'm talking about not only my customers, but you know, the 28 people who work at the Natural Food Patch, who I've been talking to. I mean, make sure that the day that that fence goes up, that there's work being done. And that there's incentives, incentives in place for people to get that work done quickly. Because there, you, there are businesses that aren't gonna make it. And those of us that are gonna make it are already really, really tightening our belts. So I just wanna make that really clear. The other thing is, are a couple little things on page, where's the public plaza? On M03, it says it's on the northwest corner of the site. But on page seven and on these pictures, it says that it's on Allen and Troy. I mean, where is it? Are there two?
Yeah, you can just keep questions, we'll go through.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions and comments from the audience? Hey, Jordan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jordan Smalley. I live at 242 Ardmore, just east of Woodward and right next to downtown. As most of the commission knows, I was on these, excuse me, the steering committee that took a look at this project earlier this year. And had the opportunity to work with the developers and the architects and see both myself and fellow steering committee members got to provide a significant amount of input that was not only listened to, but acted upon. And we saw that from meeting to meeting. This is a fairly substantially different design than we were initially presented with as a concept. And that's because the citizens of Ferndale, who represented different interests and different communities and different neighborhoods, all of our concerns were heard and addressed as was appropriate. So, part of the reason I'm here tonight is to share my experience. I felt that that was a extremely valid and useful use of my time, especially because I was the only resident from east of Woodward. Nobody ever thinks to ask us about how we feel about downtown parking just because there isn't a parking lot on my street. But that's because my street is used as a parking lot by all of our downtown visitors. I'm glad to live right next to an entertainment district. That's part of why I live in Ferndale still. Parking on my street gets hard. So I am looking forward to this being built because I don't have a driveway. I don't have a reserved street spot. And my street is not part of the residential parking zone or restricted parking. So sometimes I have to park a third of a mile away from my own house just because all the spots are, are taken. So from that aspect, I'm really looking forward to this. From a larger urban development aspect, I guess, I think this fits Ferndale's character well. This is a coherent contribution to the tight-knit community that we have, especially in the center of Ferndale, which mixes residential neighborhoods, a business district and recreation, all on a walkable scale. And that's what sets us apart from almost everywhere in southeast Michigan. There are plenty of other municipalities that have great residential or business district or recreation. But you absolutely must drive from one to the next. And our focus on being able to walk or bike from one type of lifestyle activity onto the next is a really core component for the kind of lifestyle that a lot of Ferndale residents are seeking. The people who choose to be here, choose to be here in part because we are able to do that. This is going to support that. I live just east of Woodward, just a couple blocks south of Nine Mile. I'm not gonna drive to downtown Ferndale. It would take me longer to drive there than to walk there. But I do bike here. And this is going to provide me and other people who I bike with recreationally to have a place to park our bikes and not be out in the rain as we lock or unlock or get our bags or go shopping or whatever. I don't have to load groceries onto my bike in snow. I will be watching to see what additional details the developers propose for the specifics of the bike facilities. But those are there in part because I wouldn't shut up about bike facilities throughout the meetings. And we went from having none to having a significant square footage devoted to that, which is encouraging. The, over the five years I've lived next to downtown, the, the growth that our city has experienced has been slow but consistent in quality. And that has impressed and encouraged me. Our city's track record of being forward-thinking while maintaining the character that I and other residents enjoy shows me that the city is thinking very carefully before acting, but they're not dragging their feet either. We are near some other communities in southeast Oakland County that have aggressively resisted any form of change, even when it's coming from outside their own borders. Their patterns of visitors have changed, the wishes of their residents have changed, the wishes of their business owners have changed. And yet, the city has resisted. We have them, I, I don't need to name names, but we have them within a few miles of us. And they're not as attractive places to live as Ferndale is. I feel that way, I know a number of other residents who feel that way. I don't wanna live in a city that resists change. This is a great addition, it's a great transition between the different uses we have in this area of the city. And I'm looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the audience? All right, I'm gonna read a couple of questions that we got via email from Councilwoman Piana. She emailed Councilman Martin and me a couple of questions because she wasn't able to be here. So I, these are on the mind of the councilwoman and actually a couple were on my list as well. She is interested, and, and this is actually more a council question than a planning commission question, about the progress that the city has made reaching out to developers? And what coordination of construction timeline might you foresee with other developments happening? You know, if this structure is perhaps going to get coordinated with some of the other elements to try to have as little impact as possible? She's also had a question about stormwater and green infrastructure. She said that the, the tree wells and landscaping treatments look like they are not really sort of specifically green infrastructure such as rain gardens to guide stormwater runoff. And she asked if our new sustainability planner would be present? Welcome. And wanted to ask about how it might be improved over standard boxed tree wells or raised planer curves. She, and I actually shared a question also about lighting. She said she noticed the very modern lighting that was proposed, which is very different than our street lamps on Nine Mile. And that overall, she doesn't see many coordinating design elements that pull less Nine Mile into us Troy to make this a cohesive district. She's wondering, where do the hanging plants go? And what about bench seating, trash cans, other elements that say that you're in downtown Ferndale? We've got a theme in downtown Ferndale and how would the new development pull in those elements? I shared those questions as well. So I would then close the public hearing at 7:34. We've got a number of questions to go through. I think we can, we can dive into it. There were a couple around themes of environmental issues, which I certainly know we haven't gone over at the planning commission in terms of whether or not this was a brownfield site? If there was sampling done? If there was an environmental impact assessment of any type required or completed? And also, what types of health concerns or other issues might we need to mitigate during demolition and construction?
Start with bringing up Mike Ortley, our lead engineer from Carl Walker. We did actually begin with the geotechnical study before we did any site selection process. He can speak to that. And I think you can probably also speak to the test. I think a test is required for an environmental impact study. And you can.
Yes, the, well, a couple, I'll answer a couple of questions in one D. We did do environmental testing on the site, or environmental evaluation of Phase One. And, and Phase One and Phase Two was also done on the site about 20 years ago. So we had both those documents. And there is some potential mitigation of just naturally occurring materials. But it's, 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 it's not a brownfield.
So no buried storage tanks, no big issues that you've been able to detect?
No, no significant issues at all.
What about?
No, it, the bedrock is about 110 feet. So it is, it is a clay, a soft clay. And we did boringage down to 120 feet. So the plans are to have deep foundations. And we're evaluating alternative foundations as well, just from a cost perspective. But it is, it has been evaluated. We have recommendations from the geotech consultant. And it is soft clay in, in, in between the surface and the bedrock.
So in terms of, of other health concerns? I work in Detroit, I work with the city of Detroit a lot. And they've certainly got a lot of criticism for not mitigating health concerns during demolition and construction projects. I don't want the city of Ferndale to get the same sort of criticism. So I wondered in terms of dust from the site or diesel emissions from the vehicles that are coming and going, potentially idling behind a business? You know, how are, how are those types of things planned for or handled? Or perhaps they just need to go on your list and you can communicate how they'll be handled?
Yeah, I think those are things that we can address through the actual bid documentation process. Is that correct? We can make that a requirement in terms of bid response.
You can make it a requirement in your bid documentation that people provide environmental mitigation.
They would outline how they would address those.
So whoever the contractor is would need to address it in the bid that comes to the city?
And that would factor into the recommendation.
Yeah, and I, I think we can probably address the parking issue at the same time. We would also dictate where the contractor parks and where's, whether he has to park off-site, buses, laborers in. So we'll, we'll handle that in the documents as well as any, any mitigation of dust and, and.
So the expectation is not that there are going to be, in addition to the neighborhood, you know, pressures, this will temper, temper, neighborhood parking pressures, this would temporarily put on surrounding streets, there wouldn't also be contractors parking on side streets? They, you'd be able to hold them to a agreement that says your folks were supposed to park over here? That's the intent that I'm hearing?
That would be the intent behind the agreement. And again, that's, that agreement would be presented to the city council. And the city council would be able to review and accept those terms that we would be recommending as part of the agreement.
Okay. While we're on parking, you articulated the plan to date earlier in terms of that you're looking for other lots? That there was a temporary valet solution? I, I still heard other parking communication concerns. I don't know if you've got answers to those right now or if you guys can just note them. I mean, I, the city manager is here and the communications director is here, so.
Sure, no, they're noted. We, we, we do have a very detailed communications plan. And I'd be happy to invite our communications director up to speak a little bit more in detail.
I think she just stepped out.
She just stepped out, but.
Yes, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have.
We, we are in an active pursuit of looking for shared parking agreements in service lots that are available downtown that the city does not know. We have a couple of conversations going on. I'm not comfortable discussing those right now because we don't actually have agreements to speak about. But we are in active pursuit. So we do recognize that valet is a priority. But we recognize that there is a desire for us to continue to pursue more options. We are continuing to attempt to pursue more options as best as we can available.
There were a number of, actually, well, I see two other questions that weren't specifically related to site plan. So I think we've got a few others we can get to in just a minute. But in terms of smart building elements and cybersecurity concerns? Anything that, that the city's planning at this time?
It's pretty premature at this point to, to speak to that. But we, we certainly would tie in our technology consultant. And we would, we have a network administrator who would be advising us in terms of network rules and network access administration that would guide our current protocol. This is a municipal building. It would be guided by the same municipal framework in terms of network administration.
And then the other question about, that's not, I think the other pieces were pretty site plan specific. I'll, I'll double check. But about a construction timeline and keeping that as, as compressed as possible and the potential for performance incentives. I'm not sure if that's something you guys have talked about or might be considered in a bid, but to incentivize on-time completion, is that something the city's?
I could talk to, I think Mike and Dan could probably speak more intelligently on performance incentives. In terms of construction timeline, I do wanna make the point that January is probably not the most updated timeline right now. Again, because it's contingent on the approvals process from where we're at today. We're probably looking at a Feb, between a February and April kind of range. I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna leave it at an ish right now because that's just the best I can deliver. We're at an ish point. It really just depends on the approvals process. But really, to, to give you just kind of a steps, it's the approval of an actual design, then we complete design documents, then we complete a bid document package, then we go out, we go bid selection, we negotiate, then we still have to get that agreement approved. And there's a lot of important terms that have to go into that. And that could take some time. And then we have to ground break. So there's a lot of filler left to be determined, so.
But the, we can talk about performance incentives, but the, the question about timeline and managing that timeline as closely as possible in terms of.
No, sure, but that was to the point that was brought up about a possible January groundbreaking. So I just wanted to make sure we addressed that point too.
Thank you.
But in terms of performance incentives.
Got it.
Yep.
Thanks.
We've not talked about that yet. And, and typically, if, if allowed by the city, we would, we would look at certainly liquidated damages for delays. As far as performance on the other side, that's pretty unusual, but it's something that we could consider. But definitely liquidated damages are appropriate on a project like this.
Carrot and/or stick, I guess, would be up to you guys.
The, the stick is more, the contractors don't much like that, but the stick is pretty, pretty typical in projects like this. It's, it's somewhat hard to define the carrot.
I understand, yeah, it's outside of the purview of this body, but if you guys are here, questions? All right, so, planning commission. We still got a couple of questions on the table, but I know I had some similar questions. I imagine others do. We had three. We had three items that we're reviewing tonight. Planning unit development, which has its own set of criteria, special land use, which has its own set of criteria, as well as a site plan. Excuse me. To get us started, was there anyone who had specific questions around those qualifying conditions and criteria for planned unit development or special land use? The last time we did a PUD, we really sort of jumped right into the site plan because so much pre-work had been done on those other two pieces, so I thought I'd ask first. I have one special land use question. I didn't know if anyone had questions specifically on PUD qualifying conditions and related to a PUD motion and special land use. Can you start with mine? Oh, yeah, good. Please.
Um, I suppose Councilwoman Piana's question about the cohesion with the rest of downtown really is reflected in the PUD motion?
Yeah.
And so I would echo that. I think that's a very, is a great point.
Mm-hmm.
While I personally like the looks of the more modern lighting, I think it does very much differentiate from the feel of West Nine Mile. So I'm curious if there might be an opportunity to integrate some of those similar elements.
I would concur with that.
I agree.
You don't have to come the whole way, but you make the benches look similar. There's just no transition.
I had similar questions, and I also had a question for the commission and/or the staff about how much of this site plan we're approving? Because we've got, most of our specific documents are about the parking structure, but it really opens with sort of a full West Troy Street treatment. And then some of the materials that we look, we look at are related to the street scape. So these questions about pavers are actually covered in this, these site plan documents, too. So what is the specific purview of this, of this PUD? Because I am very happy to talk about pavers and benches and lighting, whether it's now or in the site plan, but I just want to clarify, what is this body being asked to approve?
Sure. I mean, items like the alley and shared street concept, lighting that would be on West Troy, I think council would appreciate, you know, feedback, but in the end, it would be council's decision on if, you know, that final light pole looks like that on West Troy Street or if they wanted to go with the standard that's throughout downtown.
I mean, I guess as a, as a planned unit development and the reason we went in that direction was because of the mixture of uses and the shared street concept really lends itself to that mixture of uses, so it made sense to me to include it in the discussion. I just, I will admit, I did not read the PUD contract as close as I did the ones with the private developers.
Sure. Right.
So I wasn't, in terms of parcels and things that we're really specifically looking at in this PUD, I'll give input all night long, but I want to make sure I'm approving the right things.
The, I mean, yeah, the core site plan is the most important regarding the PUD agreement.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question, sorry, Justin, we sat down, I apologize. On, in the PUD description, it was in the motion, talks about some phasing, and this goes to Gar's question about the, what we're approving in terms of potential siting and massing of the residential, because that's, the way you guys have been talking about it, it seems like that's the piece that, you know, might be sort of a tack on or add on. So would this body see a separate site plan for the residential, for example, to address that blank wall on the south facade?
Yeah, at a later date. So that would be...
And the rooftop terrace? Or should we say, or should we give direction on those things now?
Um, I think...
The rooftop terrace, it needs to get pulled forward, you, those sorts of things now?
Yeah, we kind of, yeah, we kind of made suggestions as to the form, I guess. So we mostly focused on height setback, general materials. But, you know, I think you could make recommendations that could guide the future, whatever happens there at whatever time. But yeah, that's kind of why we kept it in the PUD is sort of broad. Whoever, if someone would come forward to do that piece, they would have to kind of fit the character, and they would come through this body for site plan approval.
But conversations about setbacks or height or expectations for rooftop patio, those should be laid out now so that the developer has clear guidance?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we can do that in the site plan because it is in all the drawings. I also had a question, and I think the special land use criteria is the, is the spot to have this conversation in terms of use restriction. And I went back through Bob Gibbs downtown recommendations and market study, and I think this must have been in our report out in conversation because it's not written as explicitly in his study as I remember it, you know, being said. Which is that Ferndale is sort of at this cusp of tipping into an entertainment district and having a less, less ability to sustain independent retail. I very distinctly remember Bob talking about that. And in the retail market study, you know, his recommendations for what is sustainable in downtown Ferndale focused on additional retail and additional retail capacity in our market capture area, with a lesser focus on, on food and beverage locations, more intense uses. So I wanted to talk with the commission about whether there's any appetite, if, so the, so I can tell you where this came from. So Councilwoman Piana and I were at an event in Berkeley, and we were talking about their retail mix and how ours is changing and theirs will probably change and how Royal Oak's evolved and thought about our inability as a city to, you know, control, landlords lease to, it's private property, they're private developers or business owners and, you know, what, what may or may, what levers we could push or not. And we started talking about this development and having worked in midtown Detroit for as long as I have, I've worked in a neighborhood that has a lot of property owner control and a lot of community development corporation control over what gets sited where. And I thought, wow, this is actually an opportunity for the city to say if we prioritize one use over another in order to preserve a type of business in our downtown or a type of use in our downtown, should we do this?
Could you give a comment?
I'm looking, I'm absolutely looking for comments on it.
So I spoke about it a couple of weeks ago.
For like two minutes, yeah, after Melanie and I talked about it.
I had further conversation, and I think, yes, those against, I do kind of agree, yes, we should have some control over that, I don't think we need to do the PUD, I think developer agreement would substantially cover that, about what could go in there. So I think the intent is solid, but I don't know that the PUD is document to determine that.
I was looking at it as a part of the special land use. So typically, if we're...
You can still defer back to the developer agreement, put it in there, it's a control that I like.
The PUD agreement?
Oh, is that the, like, an agreement that would put it on the developer?
Do we have that or you just know that it's coming?
It's coming. I don't think it would come here to this body.
No, not typically.
No.
Okay, so it's not something we've seen, it's something that, you know, would get negotiated.
Something we'd have to be in a negotiation with. Things that's clear with our intent?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think I would recommend, you know, if there is intent on use, focusing on uses, I would probably put in the PUD agreement just to say, in keeping with the master plan and then knowing that anyone who, you know, if we were to have someone manage the retail commercial space on the ground floor, that that would be, I mean, council would have to approve a development agreement for that, that piece. So we, the city would have control on that.
Any other thoughts on the appropriateness? To my knowledge, Ferndale has done this in my lifetime in terms of developing a property and having any ability to control what happens there, so.
Through the chair, I'm in agreement with you and I don't know how else we would frame that out for future understanding without mentioning it here.
Right.
My main concern with that or a concern that's been raised, too, is we don't know what 50 years old looks like. This is a 50-year building. To mandate forever through this process that that, that's what those, those scorecards have to be is a little frightening.
But can it be worded in such a way as to refer back to the current master plan?
That's what I was just thinking.
It doesn't have to say...
The master plan is not, it's going to just say we need more retail, but it's not going to say I'm in a spot, don't put a restaurant.
Well, or it's going to say what types of businesses are prioritized in the community. You know, the master plan gets updated every decade.
Right. Cool.
I don't think a specific business type needs to be listed, but in broader strokes, at least from the standpoint of this body to reference back to the master plan, at least then, you know, even if it does change in 50 years, it's not like they have to redo it, it's that it's referring back to whatever the current master plan is, is leading us toward.
Yeah, again, I agree with this, I just don't know that it's necessary to put it in the document because the master plan should take precedent under it. Right? You don't have to say the master plan puts precedent under what we, because even retail, right?
But not if it's managed by a private entity. But that, I mean, that's the whole point, is we actually have an opportunity with that space that's managed around the priorities that the community just set out on the master plan.
I just worry that it could get managed right out. The intent of what we're talking about right now could get lost five years, eight years out, and then it, there's no reference back to a master plan.
And it's a TGI Fridays.
I think it's probably fair to go around that, just refer back to the master plan here.
Is that most appropriate as a part of a special land use motion or a part of a PUD motion?
I think the, the PUD, it can be mentioned as a condition and that we put it in the PUD agreement.
Yeah, that's a good point. It runs with the development. Thank you. Any other questions before we dig into site plan? Any other questions on, I just mean, we can't come back to it, but anything specific on PUD and special land use? Site plan, my friends. I've got a big old site plan. Justin, will you clarify event plaza, public plaza, paved space, green space? Like, I swear, at one point, there was green space on a corner and now it looks like it's paved and...
I'm trying to think of which is the best image, but... Okay. This one? Yeah. And, yeah, I'll probably lean on Blake for backup on this. But generally, this front corner, northwest corner, would be the public plaza regardless of if this, you know, if residential ever happens there. So those trees that are lining Allen would be part of the plan, and then this sort of front area where there's the trees with the wells, these benches, so that would be kind of an open, an open area that's, that's for the public.
Wasn't it green space in a previous rendering?
Um, I think we just, I think we just committed to it being a public plaza type space. I don't think we were really sure at that point if it would be grass, pavers, you know. So this is essentially where we landed with trees being important to add to the overall canopy to the city.
Whole lot of hardscape.
Did you say it, John?
It's a whole lot of hardscape. So in terms of then the conversations about event plaza, that's something that was conceived of actually in the street, that like the street would potentially be closed for public events?
Right. So that was kind of a big, at the last meeting, we had, you know, went back to the drawing board on that and kind of said, you know, the shared street is the, the street design is the most important part of that. You know, if we never close that street for a farmer's market or any type of small event, you know, that's fine. We really just wanted to make sure that the shared street was the part that lived, lived through the process. So, so we see that also as sort of public space, improved public space, better crossings, just accessibility for everyone, essentially. And then we, you know, there's not green space trade-offs, and we're able to get the trees that, really, there aren't many there at this point.
Blake, can I invite you up to kind of define for the public what the shared street is and kind of demonstrate the continuity between the right of way and then the street?
The, the shared street concept is essentially an elimination of the curbs that define the edge of a traditional street. It also takes into account materiality, paving materials and so forth that tie pedestrian ways to the, the streetway itself. Beyond that, we address those issues of defining the street in terms of different colored paving to identify street lanes, the planters and street trees to help define the street edge and help control pedestrian traffic where people are traversing the street. We try and funnel them to crosswalks and so forth. And then incorporating our, our plaza idea as the, the main use point, I'll, I'll say, for the, for the, for the deck. We think that most people using the deck are going to likely come into this plaza, so the hardscape is, is very intentional. That's also where we envision the access to the retail or the residential development, excuse me, to help keep that away from the single-family residential neighborhood, sort of in keeping with some of the master planning ideas that we had seen from Hamilton Anderson as that was updated. But we think that this is going to be a very busy, energetic, very well-used corner is the rationale for the, the amount of hardscape that we have. And then trying to address an improvement on what you would see as a standard street tree planer box. We tried to engage some seating areas and things like that to amplify the design, make it more pedestrian-friendly.
In terms of the paving and the paver materials, Justin, are we approving these types of materials and street scape materials and things tonight? I certainly want to address them because I had similar questions about pavers versus integral dyed concrete versus stamped concrete. And from a durability perspective, it is a very high-use area over where the, not just the loading zone, but even, you know, that, that area where the garbage trucks are going to need to back up. Are we going to get rutted pavers? Are we going to get stained pavers?
Yeah, that can be part of the recommendation, absolutely. I'd lean on Blake and the team to talk about durability and things like that, but it definitely came up in our conversations.
Okay.
We, we understand your concerns about when, when you see a paver. What really is important when you look at a system like that is what's beneath it. So we had talked about a lot of different materials regarding what the street could be, what the sidewalk could be. We talked about potentially doing stamped concrete. We talked about doing colored concrete. We feel that the pavers are a good solution for this because you're able to maintain your design over time. We designed the, the street as a street with a paver cap, so there is actually a roadway with a paver cap on it, so they're, they're very durable. They should maintain their, their shape and position over time. But what that allows you to do, if you had, for instance, a stamped concrete or a poured concrete roadway, those crack over time, you're going to end up with patchwork and so forth, and you, you just sort of lose that quality over, over the lifespan of the, of the plaza. Whereas if you have a paver installation, those pavers can be removed, stockpiled, your streetway could be repaired if required, and then those could be replaced in, in kind.
Which is a point, if you continue on that, durability, as soon as five years of assault truck going over, it would be a big...
Do you have any examples of installations like that, that we can, you know, that have been down for five or 10 years that we could go look at then?
We worked with our landscape architect, we worked with Unilock, probably one of the largest paving suppliers in the area, and there is some sites we can give you, some I don't... there is some sites we can give you, some, I don't have them offhand, we can we can direct you to them to some areas. Uh, there was a lot of consideration given um over brick versus concrete versus which one lasts longer. And that we have found that the concrete pavers have a little bit higher compressive strength, and they'll be sitting on a bed of slag, sitting on a bed of concrete, as Blake mentioned, uh the herringbone pattern is intentional, and that's the strongest method to lock the pavers together. Uh, there's been a lot of bad examples over time, and Unilock has been involved in those, so they have their name on it too, so they've done a lot of study to make sure that they've gotten this right, and uh Little Caesars Arena's got it all over the place now, they just put it down, but they didn't spend eight hundred and ninety million dollars to do it wrong, and there's been a lot of study over other places that uh the newer technology of laying a roadway and then having the appropriate sub base and then the pavers on top of that um is the way to go. So we will get you some places to to look at, uh we have that e- exact same concern, and that's that's why we went away from the colored concrete and we went away from stamped concrete.
Oh, on the topic of the the shared street, um, I want to go back to Jay's point, because I agree with Jay about the loading and parking zone, we don't have to do, we're building a parking garage, we don't have to have on-street parking, right? We can just keep it a loading zone.
Yeah, one of the things that that we looked at there, uh in in Gibbs', his report had said, he was kind of emphasizing on-street parking. So as we developed our concepts for that and we were looking to consolidate the loading on the north side, uh it was in conversation that there's existing is, there's a hundred and fifty feet of loading right now, and we would add another hundred feet, that equates to five loading zones. And um quite frankly, we don't think our development needs two loading zones for everything we're ever gonna do. The likely retail is probably gonna drive up, pop into the front, we're not gonna take massive uh loads of uh materials on a daily basis. So we thought that maybe there's the opportunity to give back some of those spaces at night if you have a two hundred and fifty foot strip that's not really being utilized. So um the idea was to control it with signage, in that perhaps at five o'clock or three o'clock or seven o'clock, those spaces could be turned over for parking. So quite frankly, we have control to leave it as loading, we could have spots in specific places for loading, or it could just not be parking at all. And something that could evolve over time, and if it makes sense, it could be done.
And I think about the evening now, right now Uber and Lyft are stopped in traffic on Wood, we're trying to pick people up and drop them off, I think this is an opportunity to maybe direct that morning.
Yeah, and again, we we certainly wouldn't make that, that's an operational decision for the parking system, and it's as you said, the public right of way, which would be regulated by city council, but we certainly wouldn't make that operational decision without consulting the businesses loading along there, this is kind of the starting point in terms of loading.
So while we're on the shared street and those related materials, any other questions or comments? I don't know about pedestrian crossing, um, and just thinking about, I think, what's that, I don't remember what we what we call it in planning parlance, but that uh rule that people will always take the shortest distance between two points. Thank you, desire lines, so if people are coming out of an office building lobby, I don't understand how they're not just gonna walk straight across the street to the retail.
They are.
Right, so are we, by by not having some type of um, whether it's a crosswalk, or I see we've got a bit of a visual break in the trees, um, but you're kind of now heading into the loading zone, how do we keep pedestrians safe? They're gonna wanna cross in the in the middle of the structure, because that's where their office building dumps them out. Is it, if if it's not reasonable to have a striped crosswalk, perhaps it is, uh but if it's if it's not, because we already have two where the stairwells are, which we talked about before, um, are there other things that we should do, either with lighting or breaking the trees, or something that just sort of give pedestrians more visibility to drivers and vice versa, because they're gonna walk across the street right there?
So I'm just gonna pull this up briefly.
With the chair, I wonder if we could um actually just block that off, similar to the rest of the street scape there? Or do some kind of treatment where it's it's really deterring people?
Push people to the edges?
Right.
Uh, I mean, you cer- you certainly could. Yeah, you could certainly design it in a way that pushes people, I think with the gaps in the trees, people still may cross.
I mean, we've made it barrier free, so people are gonna cross.
Right, yep, um, so I I do, it's a big improvement over what's there now, where I think people do cross wherever and 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 making it barrier free, and the texture of the pavement does kind of lend itself to traffic calming as well. Um, so certainly we could do wayfinding signage to push people to those areas and, you know, block that off there, but I think people will probably do what they want to in the end, but.
I I understand your concern, especially regarding the uh, I'll I'll call it a pseudo plaza in front of the lobby. Uh, there are things that could be implemented there if if required, um, you know, by planning as conditions regarding in some implementation of uh secondary bollard or something like that, that helps continually define the edge of the street and the beginning of the sidewalk. That could be a piece of art, it could be a sign, it could be a bollard, it could be something, it could be a crosswalk that we uh add into the project if you see so fit. We've studied a lot of that, and we're we're thinking that a majority of the people are going to be coming out of the deck, out of the elevators and the stairs, that that was the uh...
The parkers, yeah.
Yeah, that was that was the the rationale for the location of the crosswalks.
Yes.
People will do what people do, um, I don't think that we're going to change human nature uh through design, we might be able to help wayfind it slightly.
Certainly not through signage. Not through signage, um, I'm thinking, we've got a hundred people upstairs, and this is their entrance and exit from the office building. Um, they're not gonna go back to their car before they go across the street to get food, you know, we want them to shop in the downtown, um...
Yes, I I, yeah, I I totally agree with that, um, I think we should consider where their pedestrian paths are uh back to those restaurants. Giving them the opportunity of a crosswalk where uh you would intuitively consider a crosswalk would be, is a good start. Considering where the pedestrian pass-through is uh to Nine Mile, um, people are going to um likely traverse to the east to get to that. They'll probably cross at the crosswalk because it's visually there.
I agree.
You're gonna get a guy that runs across the street occasionally, I'm sure, that's in a hurry and and so forth.
I just, so here's my example.
And the other, and in turn, the other uh main access to Nine Mile is is along Allen, um, there are a few um uh businesses that people might...
So Campus Marshes is my example, right, so I watched the doors open at the Kavir Building and everyone pile straight out into Campus Marshes, interrupting traffic and ignoring the two lovely, well-designed and constructed and signaled crosswalks that have been built in. So you could come out of the building and you go straight forward, so that's where the, I get stuck in it a lot.
So you're eliminating the crosswalk that's there?
No, we're talking about adding one.
I don't see the crosswalk that's already there.
So right now they...
The one that goes almost directly straight to my building, it's not there?
So I I don't know exactly where where your building is, but the two crosswalks that were drawn kind of corresponded with where people would be safely coming down the stairs or out the elevators.
So you're eliminating the crosswalk that's there?
The the crosswalk that is...
I don't know exactly where it is on the site.
I could I could kind of address that, having just walked there just the other day, I believe that crosswalk, uh it it is, it is true, that is not shown on this plan right now, but I believe the crosswalk was placed there because that's where the pay-on-foot station is. And that pay-on-foot station will not be there with no parking in front of the Nine Mile. So uh, while I I think it was a, it was a chicken or the egg thing, it's, that's where they put the pay station, so they allowed people to cross, so...
That crosswalk has been there since my building, since I bought the building in nineteen ninety-three.
And and it could still, it could, it could still be there.
I, we can't have, we can't have conversation off the record, so we're talking about crosswalks, and we're talking about the...
That's currently what's there.
First, I realized you were eliminating that crosswalk, that's gonna be a big safety rock for us.
So, well, and that's the conversation right now is about putting it back in, the mid-block crossing.
Thank you.
Yep. Just because we know it's where people cross, and we know it's where people are gonna be coming out of this office building if they're heading to the businesses downtown to shop or diner, get back and forth, so.
There there will, and I think that the the implementation of the crosswalk is is juxtaposed to the uses of the lot as a surface lot, which promotes pedestrian, free pedestrian movement. We're consolidating the movement to the corners of the site, which is where is is why we placed the uh the crosswalks in that location. So since A. Jane's um customers are going to be coming down those stairs and elevators and safely safely being able to cross the street at those locations.
Understood, so are we, am I hearing that it's the interest of the commission in having a mid-block crossing where people are gonna be emptying out of an office building?
Yes.
Great, excellent, which is, if it's not exactly where it is now, it's closed. Thank you. Any other comments other than the ones about street landscaping, street trees, whatnot, that I want to make sure we get back to, but any other questions about pavers, materials?
Uh, not necessarily pavers or materials.
Whatever, take it away.
Um, but just talking about pedestrians and and walking.
Please.
I'm I'm just curious what the width is of the sidewalk between the streets and the parking deck, what that, what that width would be. And the renderings would just look tight, I'm just wondering if it's...
We will obviously maximize that, we we understand um that the the public sidewalk between the building and the planters is gonna want to be at least eight to ten feet wide.
Okay.
Is what we're gonna plan for.
Okay, great.
So it'll it'll allow free movement of, you know, two-way traffic in front of the building, so you wouldn't be constricted. That was one of the devices that we wanted to get rid of, was the on-street parking to alleviate that problem. So we we wouldn't put something back that exacerbates that.
As someone who has recently uh walked around the city with a stroller and a dog attached to me, I know that there are a lot of spots in the city where, you know, it gets really tight in pedestrian zones, and I just want to make sure that this applies possibly.
Currently, there's a five-foot sidewalk and a ten-foot parking space.
Sure.
So we have fifty feet to work with.
Okay.
And uh in between property line and the roadway.
All right, someone talk to me about um green infrastructure in these in these planters, um coordination with DDA look and feel, um hanging plants, other design elements to really make this feel like it's part of downtown Ferndale, because even if it's not technically in this site plan review, uh it's gonna come up at your city council conversation, so um sort of surprised that the that the the DDA in terms of their design cohesion, it's been a long time since I was in the DDA committees and stuff, but um design cohesion was a really big deal back in the day.
Yeah, that makes sense, so uh after this step, uh any development downtown, including this one, goes to the DDA Pre-Enter Review Committee.
Okay.
Um, so we've kind of initially vetted that, we we have initially vetted that criteria, and so, yeah, um, I think that can be addressed there as well.
Another good reason for us to not be approving site furniture, but to be talking about this.
Okay, and onto that, just, this is more of an operational question again, I apologize, but the the maintenance and right now the benches and the flowers and all that is the DDA making that, is that the operational model going forward in this site, or is that yet to be determined?
Uh, that is the current operation for the current infrastructure, but that 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 budget yet to be determined, hasn't been discussed.
Just gonna take a second and look at my notes. Oh, um, couple of of questions about the the residential that I'll I'll hang on to, I'm sorry, I missed a utility question. So we got the report on water pressure and fire, but maybe we move to utilities, um, because I've got a couple of questions about lighting in the alley, alley treatment, but there was a question about storm sewers, um storm sewer capacity, storm sewer tie-in, underground retention.
I think our, I invited our director of public works, Lloyd Kurten, and he's actually speaking with the resident out in the hall about his issues personally right now.
Perfect, we'll come back to it then.
Be happy to invite him in for public comment, though.
Okay, we can, we can come back to it then when Lloyd comes back in, um, I I had actually a couple...
Let me make sure he does come back in, so let me grab him.
Okay, um, but I also had questions, um, in terms of utilities, we, some time ago, and plans change, and I know we've certainly changed the design enough that it could have changed ventilation needs. But we've now got ventilation outputs on the back of this, um, on the back of this plan, and I I I remember asking about ventilation and whether or not there was a need for mechanical ventilation and how that would impact noise and neighbors and stuff at one of our planning meetings, and there was no ventilation plan at that time. So now I I see ventilation intake and ventilation exhaust along the back, um, talk to me about noise, um, how those turn on and off, oh, Lloyd's back.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, if we can, we can just conclude, this is Lloyd Kurten, the director of public works.
We'll go back to Spencer.
He oversees water and sewer for the city.
Well, stop.
Hello, ladies and commissioners, for those of you who don't know me, Joe just did a fine introduction. Um, I understand that uh some of the residents which who I was just speaking to in the hallway had concerns about the storm and the sanitary as well as water.
Right.
I still cover the water end of it, so I can tell you that on the storm and sanitary side, the DPW inspection crew has gone out and videoed, captured video on all of the sewer and storm main combined system on Troy, Allen, as well as the alley. Um, that was reviewed by our engineering consultants, Giffith Webster, and found no deficiencies. In addition to that, I might point out that as stormwater controls are built into the site for various reasons, um, it actually, as it, the site drains currently, it's all sheet runoff into the system with no control whatsoever. So anything that we do to the site will actually minimize, you know, the impact that's currently happening on site. So whatever development or sustainability or stormwater controls put in will actually reduce the impact during a storm event, and the commercial component is so small that overall it 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 will almost be, it won't even notice the impact.
How was that video on YouTube, Lloyd?
Definitely rated G, little boring, but um available to anybody who wants the foyer, so.
That's helpful.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Other questions about site retention, or? Thank you, I'm sorry, I asked it just as you'd stepped out. So I I did want to to ask about about noise and exhaust um and ventilation along the alley, because I'm now seeing two exhausts and an intake. Um, so what what has changed in terms of mechanical ventilation needs, um, and how does that impact noise and other things near the residences?
When we made the decision to put one level underground.
Yep, okay.
That level is required to be ventilated.
Okay.
To monitor exhaust and uh Mike might be able to augment some of my conversation, uh they'll they'll have minimal airflow through there, probably on a constant basis to have some airflow, and then if there's a CO monitor goes off, they will increase the ventilation until the situation is back to normal. And uh there's ways to uh have the fans run on different speeds.
Okay.
So that uh it's not a noise issue, but we do have, uh as we go down, we have two spots where we think, we we haven't engineered the system yet, but intuitively and through experience, we need to take air out in two spaces and and put air in in one place most likely in order to do that.
Okay.
So so that is the uh basis to do that, and and the the place to do that is along the alley.
Also, along that alley, um, my understanding is that you guys are, and I'm glad you're, did Gar come back, or did he go out with Lloyd again, oh geez? Um, I believe you guys are are digging up and and redoing, the thought is that you're gonna dig up and redo the alley. How is that impacting the fences that are there? Is, does the city need to make some type of commitment to residents about replacing or fixing fences? Um, I just, I, they're right on the alley, um, this is like zero, zero, zero lot line. I can't imagine we're not going to be disturbing uh fences, potentially even garages, so I wondered how that would be... I can't imagine we're not going to be disturbing, uh, fences, potentially even garages, so I wondered how that would be mitigated and communicated with the neighbors. I mean, if your, if your site survey suddenly sees that, like, the back of someone's fence is actually in the alley's right-of-way, what are we doing?
Yeah, that'd be, there's, there's ways that we could-
Or if you back something into a fence.
Approach that, that's a, that's a s- city council decision in terms of, uh, it's a budgetary decision in terms of, uh, perhaps, uh, an improvement allowance for residents who border the site. It could be negotiated, but there's, there's methods that can be deployed to address residents who border in terms of fencing, that's a consideration.
The, it's a, it's an opportunity to make it consistent in newer materials, it would be one benefit. The, we know we have a rodent problem in Ferndale, there may be garage foundation issues that could even be addressed. So, I don't know, I guess I'm looking at, at Councilman Martin, just something, um, for you to think about, apparently, um, in, in terms of how, how pro- private property, um, is, is thoughtfully addressed. I'm sure if we accidentally back into a fence, there's an insurance policy that covers that, but-
Yes.
Um, is there a, um, is there any type of proactive improvement or communication that needs to happen with those? There's gotta be someone's fence who's over the lot line, it's gonna happen, so. I think I'm done on alleys and paving.
Like, yeah, I'm excited about my, I, I have a lot of observations about that alley before, but the safety, the lighting looks really good to me.
Yeah.
The, the, the lower level of the lights, though, you said they were adjustable, what does that look like, or how, adjustable how? Just by grabbing it, so anybody walking around, you can reach out and move the light, or is that, is it mechanical, or?
No, uh, during the construction process, we would, a- at the end of the pros- uh, at the end of that process, look at the lights. Those, those are adjustable, but those would be fixed in, in an adjustable position, so you'd be able to adjust the light where it needs to be and then affix it there.
Can nobody walking by get?
No, they, they wouldn't be in a, in a height where someone could, could grab and, and vandalize it, no.
Okay. And the, the phone units, um, I'm either, I'm great for that category, so I just wanna come, uh, along with the light.
Thank you.
I will stop monopolizing the conversation, other site plan issues, please.
Uh, if I, if I could through the chair, uh, I have a question slightly related to paving, but also phasing of this project.
Please. Mm-hmm.
Specifically, let's talk about the residential to start.
Mm-hmm.
Part of this site plan that we're approving, I know you showed a rendering that had a, a, a green space where that residence, residential building is. Are we approving that as part of this site plan? Because that's essentially what we're buying into if no one wants to put a residential building next to this.
Uh, I think the answer is yes and no. We don't have a timeline regarding the residential development. We do know that the master plan promotes residential development in that area. We also know that the project could be phased in such that the, the deck is open and complete before that development would occur. So, we've used, uh, that space as, as we felt appropriate for the initial opening of the deck as a green space that would be most easily transformed into a residential development in the future if that went forward.
I, I, I guess what I wanna know is, are we? Won't, moving forward, are, are, can we expect to see a green space there?
Yeah.
A residential building is not important?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Do you, someone wanna make that a condition?
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah.
Through the chair, I think, I think we can make it a condition, but I think because the residential will have to come back to us-
Right.
No matter what, I think the assumption is safe, I mean, personally, but I think it doesn't hurt to add it as a condition.
Sure.
Sure. Our, our intention for the residential, uh, just to state that, is that we were wanting to approve, uh, the massing of the building, the number of units setbacks and the metrics of that, not necessarily the aesthetics. So, we anticipate that whatever development, um, occurs there, they would have to come back and amend the PUD with specific, uh, elevations, materials, uh, et cetera. And the, and at that time, they would also finalize the number of units, the size of the units, the character of the building, and so forth.
Okay, so, so I'm, I guess I'm satisfied on, on that portion, and I just wanted to clarify that the two, the two floors of office space above this, we are approving that as part of this site plan, but that might not necessarily be built simultaneously on top of this, or on top of the parking deck, or?
That, that is correct, we, we are in the process of, uh, drafting a letter of intent, uh, to developers, uh, to show interest in that. We would love to see the, uh, the, the entire project built as we have designed, uh, but, but we do understand that there is the opportunity, if, if needed, uh, for a developer to amend the PUD, in which case that they would have to come back before, uh, the board and council, uh, for approval for that, um, design as well.
Okay, so, one final question, tacking on to that. Is, is it, is it possible that, that office building above or attached to this deck might look very different? Or is it intended to be built as, really as shown?
Well, I would, I would intend it to be built as shown. There is the potential for a developer to have, uh, some sort of sphere of influence over that.
Okay.
Hopefully, they would engage similar materials, similar forms, and so forth, uh, as, as we're approving tonight. Uh, but there, there might, could be, uh, a slight deviation from, from the design presented.
Understood, okay, thank you.
So, I, I lied, I did have another question about the alley, it's just on the wrong sheet, we had so many sheets. There is lighting all along the, the back of the structure, and you talked about how it can be adjusted, uh, to make it as, uh, the, the least intrusive as possible. As you approach Allen, there wasn't any suggested treatment of lighting on or as relates to either the residential development or the open space if there is no residential development. Is there lighting planned for that, in, in either case? So, if it's just an open green space, um, is there a path through it with lighting? Is it dark and empty? 'Cause right now, your last, your last light on the back-
No, no one wants dark and empty, right?
Right, your last light on the back stops two houses in, right now.
We, uh, I think the, the best thing to do there is to run a photometric without the building there and make sure that we have the appropriate coverage. That's something that we should just do.
So, a, a lighting plan for that residential site if there's no residential?
Right, correct. And that, and that may just be temporary lighting, you know, maybe the, lighting on the alley wraps around as part of the wrap of the design aesthetic that comes around, so that the street lights that get put in could be the ones that are there permanently.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, that, that's my gut reaction, just off the cuff, that we could do something in a temporary way on the structure, similar to the alley.
And then, we would see photometrics related to a residential development at the time that the residential was built. I also had a question about setbacks. I left my binder in the car, um, so I can't flip to my page. Uh, can someone talk to me about setback requirements, um, between CBD and, and R three, you know, again, going back to this alley and we know that up top, um, the office will be set really far back, uh, you know, sixty feet, holdway close to Troy Street. The residential, as I'm looking at it, um, we would potentially be approving tonight something that's set much more close, much closer-
Yep.
-to the alley.
Yes. So, the structure proposed as right now, I believe it's eighteen inches to the alley, and then the alley, I think, is eighteen feet wide?
Parking structure? Yep, okay.
Right, right.
And then residential?
Yep. Um, as far as requirements for upper-level setbacks, um, I believe it's only, um, from commercial districts to R one and R two.
Okay.
Not R three.
Correct. What about on the ground, though? Um, it, 'cause it looks like it bumps in like ten feet or something, but it's a little bit hard to tell. That, the, the back corner? Yeah.
The, the, the intent is that we, we understand there's going to be some infrastructure that, uh, we need to accommodate in terms of systems for the residential. And, and that would be the area that we would include, uh, transformer and so forth like that, so it'd be ground-mounted. We also felt that holding the residential development off of the alley a little bit was appropriate in terms of public safety and, um, view of people using the public sidewalk and vehicular traffic in, in the alley. So, by providing space for the, the required systems, you're, you're sort of double-dipping and providing a little added safety there, too.
So, there was a question about the, about the setback, um, both at ground level and as it steps up or not, um, as related to the residents to the south, um.
And, and those, again, are things that-
There's no requirement to step in.
Will still have to be, there, there is no required setback in the zoning ordinance, but again, to amend the PUD, we'll have to come back through this process again. We're, we're only, uh, trying to approve the number of units. So, the building configuration still has the opportunity to address any additional concerns the council has or the, the residents have.
And would that include that, that facade wall and whether or not there are windows in it?
Yes, that would, that, uh, we've heard, we, well, the, the generation of that is actually public comment that they didn't want windows on that side.
Right, yeah.
So, obviously, if people changed their mind, they want windows, and then whoever developed that property would-
Suggesting it.
Would, would definitely wanna, you know, put this one up there.
I, I just wanted to add that the height of what's called parcel B or the residential parcel, uh, the height is below the buy-right height by quite a measure.
Yes. Yes, and below the peaks of the potential office, but it is, if the office wasn't built and the residential was built, the residential is now a bit taller than the deck would be on its own.
That's correct.
Good, Chair, I can pull you back to lighting for a minute.
Yes.
When I look at the area on the, uh, north side, here where the, uh, trash door is, it looks like that could create kind of dark recess there near one of the exit stair walls coming out of the structure. And when I look at the lighting plan, I don't see any specific, uh, pictures that in that area by the trash door, and I may be missing something.
I agree, my mind is on the same thing on the floor.
Yeah, there will certainly be, uh, lighting at the trash door, at the overhead door, and-
So, then that needs to be included.
Yes. That, that will be taken care of, 'cause you've got us trying to place a two-thirty mark. For sure, for sure. It'll, that whole entrance will be ver- very, very well lit and slumped.
Another topic of trash, um, how do we know the dumpsters and such? 'Cause I look at, you know, if I look around the city, we have dumpster problems, it's in the spots where it overflows, if you throw them in there. Do we, not that I'm suggesting somebody go out there and monitor how much trash every week, but how do we know we're building is sufficient enough that we won't have the over, you know, the overhang, the problems we have in other areas where the capacity is just-
He's gonna empty it more often.
Right, there's-
Oh, maybe that's the answer.
The, um, the plan that's before you was based on what, what is the capacity that's out there. And I believe that, that it's being picked up like three times a week, so it could be picked up at a more robust rate if necessary. We're in the beginning stages of talking with the waste management company, and we're gonna be kinda hand-in-hand figuring out, uh, capacity, uh, rate of pickup, uh, types of, um, dumpsters that are there. Currently, we're handling, uh, grease, and we're handling, uh, compaction through the restaurants in a very large forty, uh, forty-yard dumpster. And there's also capacity for, uh, some pretty, uh, substantial recycling. There's, um, two large four-yard dumpsters or five-yard dumpsters for, uh, paper, and then there's the curb carts, um, to handle glass and metal and plastic. And, um, the one thing that we have the ability to do, we believe we have the proper width to take care of what's necessary. If we need to augment that by expanding to the back, we have a little bit of room to do that. And so, uh, we're gonna work with the city, with the contractor, uh, we're gonna invite some of the businesses who use the dumpsters to hear their issues and their woes of what happens right now. Uh, but certainly, we wanted to make sure it was inside, so we can control the smell, we can ventilate it, we can wash it, and we can stop the noise, uh, from the neighbors, uh, the two AM compacting, 'cause, uh, the compactor's just gonna be the way to take care of it no matter what.
Is there a plan to relocate these dumpsters, um, during construction? Are they gonna be in another city lot, or are they?
That will all just be part and parcel to the development of how does traffic flow, how do the dumpsters work? Uh, we, we've done this sort of thing before, and it, it's just a lot of communication with, with the neighbors to find a plan. Uh, you know, it's possible that they're here today, and then when we're building over here, they have to move over there, and it's just something that has to be worked in and, and maintained, and just communication is the key to it all.
So, there would still be dumpsters on, on West Troy, people aren't gonna have to schlep over to the plan of our lot, or not the plan of our lot, but Withington Lot?
Uh, the, the plan is to try and take care of the, uh, the area that's being taken care of within the confines. It'll, it'll have to be somewhat fluid plan, but, yeah, the answer is yes.
I think my, my last question is about, um, can we be back to basics? The number of spaces, um, I see two different numbers in two different places, and I have a question about that. Sorry, guys. So, on sheet F one hundred, um, of my, of my plan, I've got future parking count equals three hundred and eighty-five spaces, loss of twelve spaces in perens. And in my site plan, I have three hundred and ninety-seven spaces. What, what, what do I got?
Day one, when the parking structure opens, there'll be three hundred and ninety-seven spaces, that's the, that's what's shown on your plan. There's also, uh, contingency plans for circulation for the office, the two stairs that are required for the, uh, in, for exiting. And then there's space for elevators, and then there's space for an elevator machine room. And when we compensate for those, the net result is a loss of twelve spaces when the office building, uh, comes online.
Oh. I mean, I'm, it's not a deal-breaker for me that I just do that. I mean, it's, it's still a net gain, you've still got a, a flexible use time, you know, with peak and off-peak, with the shared with the office, it- Okay.
Okay.
I just thought, oh my God, I have two different numbers, two different places.
You found the truth within the numbers, that's all.
It's my job.
Yeah.
So, if that office gets built out, we lose a few parking spaces due to the need to build out the office through the deck.
Right. And, and one reason, and Blake kinda just whispered in my ear, and it's probably worth mentioning, is we're showing separate stairs for the office building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for a reason. If we share the office building stair with the parking garage stair, that stair becomes a two-hour enclosure. Um, it's less inviting, and it, it kinda detracts from the, the, the use of the stairs for the parking garage. Uh, the office workers, they won't use those stairs unless there's a fire. It's only a two-story office building, and it's, you know, uh, three more floors to get down. So, uh, those are essentially just fire stairs, they're gonna meet code, and they're gonna do their thing. Uh, but we don't see, uh, office users using those stairs. And we wanna maintain the most safe, viable, design aesthetic, best generous stairs for, uh, the actual users of the deck.
Not everyone is averse to climbing three flights of stairs, I mean, so I think, I think people are gonna use them.
Right.
We climb three flights of stairs in my office all the time, so I think people are gonna, are gonna use them.
We think the office, we think the office users will not, because they will actually, if you go into that office, we're kinda getting off in the weeds, but if you go into that office stair, your only way out is down.
It's, it's not, why? Oh my God, so people can't come back in after they've had lunch, and they have to take the elevator?
They'll come in through the elevator. That's correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I-
There, there, there are controls that would allow them to use-
I'm sorry, don't we have a plan called Ferndale Moves? Are you kidding me? Like, it's like, really, we're not giving people the option to take stairs?
There are ways that that could be used. There, there are ways that it could, that it could be used.
Maybe we might have to plan for serious.
You could have a fob, you could have a fob, and you could get into that stair and get up. It, it can be done with, with tech- It, it can be done with, with technology.
Yeah.
But.
That's fine.
It, it's.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make everyone laugh. I, I hadn't realized that they were one-way stairs. That just seems, we've got, we've got a walkable community. We have an entire plan dedicated to making our community move better and be healthier, and we're not going to let office workers take stairs. That makes absolutely no sense.
So the, the workers using the stairs, fine.
Sure, yeah.
And that, that's all good?
Yeah.
But for the average Joe, we don't want them in those.
I don't want people driving into a parking structure, going to their office, and never getting into my community, right? So the more we can do in this, in this lobby space to get those office workers out and moving and moving around and into the businesses and shopping, that is to the benefit of everyone. And like, I, I worked at Main State. We parked, we went to our office, we went back to our car, we came back home. It was terrible. So that, I'm sorry, I must have made a ridiculous face, because everyone started laughing. But that, it makes no sense to me that we would somehow plan for people to drive in, go to their office, get back to their car, and drive out. That's all I have to add, Dan. That's fine with me. I'll let you, Gimpie. Other comments or questions on the site plan? Oh, I keep forgetting this alley. I'm sorry. I had one other thing in the alley, and I didn't consolidate these well. Surveillance cameras. And we did a development recently near Eight Mile. We talked about surveillance cameras. And at that point, they were actually facing the, the front of residential developments. But there was conversation about shielding those surveillance cameras so that they're not sort of bleeding over the lines, over residential property lines. And I just wanted to make sure that that was noted as well, because I didn't see them, the placement, the specific placement of call boxes or, or cameras on the site plan. So wherever they, they go, they need to not infringe into people's backyards.
Yeah, it's a city council objective, actually, to deliver a, a policy on how to deal with surveillance of public spaces.
Oh, okay.
We're going to be working with city attorney this year to actually finalize how we deal with that.
That's great.
But there are actual, the, the standard software that we use for the city municipal buildings actually has the ability to intelligently block out public spaces. You can actually define the public space, and we'll automatically not record that.
So it'll not report the private space?
Correct, I'm, yes.
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 Thank you. Okay.
Yep.
Through the chair, this is probably for adjustment for Jill. Has there been any consideration as to what the anticipated rental rates would be for the commercial space? And any analysis as to whether those would be on minor or substantially different from the surrounding market?
We've done an initial pro forma. We contacted Oakland County assessing in the early stages in, in June. So we do have a good understanding of what the market rate is, but we also have a good understanding of what our goals are in terms of retaining what our goals are around business retention and local business, small business. So we would make sure that our market rates are in line with those goals in the master land use plan to support small business and, and business retention. But so to that end, no, our square foot rates haven't been defined at all at this point. But we do have an awareness in terms of what our current market rate is downtown and what the market rate is in the region for office retailing.
Thanks.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone feels strongly enough about rooftop terraces to want to, or the potential future rooftop terraces to want to restrict them in any way at this time? Or if we want to wait until there's a residential site plan? I'm, it'd be.
By preference, it would be doing for a residential site plan.
Yeah.
Get some more corporate space for discussion.
Yeah, I'd, I'd certainly want us to be thoughtful about it, but whether we say no rooftop terrace or in some way restrict the space of that rooftop terrace, we may need to wait for a residential.
Through the chair, if Mike should accept a motion.
Are you starting with the PUD?
Yep. I would move that in a matter of two twenty-one West Troy Street, planning commission recommend city council approve the planned unit development application with the following findings and subject to the following conditions as listed in the packet. And remind you, did we want to get one here?
It was, through the chair, I had two possible additions.
Please, please.
One, and, and perhaps this fits elsewhere, but we discussed it as part of PUD, would be to ensure that the design elements from West Nine Mile transition into this development. And then the second would be that the development agreement prioritize the desired commercial uses that are identified in the current city master plan.
There are seconds to that motion.
Can I have a second clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Which would be the, the then current master plan.
Yes.
Sort of pronounced.
Will you, you will have the motion. Do you want to send it?
I second, yes.
Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, that was a motion by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Kelly. Is there any discussion on that motion, or does the clerk need any clarification on the additional conditions?
I have the conditions, and I will listen again to make sure I have the wording exactly right.
Any discussion?
For my discussion, I would just like to, this is very detailed and lengthy a lot. I just want to thank Joe and staff and everybody putting this together and contributing to the larger market input that we have, and I think it's made it a substantially better project. So, just, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we can take our real call vote then, when our clerk is ready.
Let's go down the list here. Martin?
Yes.
Brayson?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Cassia?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Baker?
Yes, that motion passes.
I would like to make a motion in a matter of two twenty-one West Troy Street that the planning commission recommend city council approve the special land use based on plans and application dated received by the planning commission, or by the planning department on September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions as outlined in the packet.
Is there support for that motion?
Yes, support.
That is a motion made by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Williamson. Is there any discussion on this motion for the special land use? And there were no additional conditions added to the special land use. Great. We will have.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cassia?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Brayson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that motion, that motion passes.
Two twenty-one West Troy Street, the planning commission approved the site plan based on the plans dated received by the planning department on September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions as outlined in the packet. In addition?
I have four.
Okay.
All right, I've got three. Let's see what you got.
One, that we omit reference to on-street parking in the loading zone on the Sheeran Street. Two, that we add a mid-block crossing across Troy Street at the main building entrance. Three, that the green space be constructed at the west end of the building if the residential component is postponed, and that it be accompanied by a photometric lighting plan. And four, that we incorporate additional lighting at the entrance to the trash election room.
Is there support for that motion?
Yes.
All right, so that was a motion made by Martin and supported by Williamson with a, with a great assist by Kelly.
Did that cover your three?
It did.
Okay.
Yeah, I consolidated to you very nicely, actually. Was there a discussion on this motion?
Yes, if I, if I could. I, I wonder if with the photometric light plan, if we should see a, an actual site plan for that green space as well as part of that condition? To see what the green space is. So I would like to add that to the, the conditions as well.
Can I ask the clarification on that? Does that require this coming back into the planning commission when it holds it up in going to council?
Oh, maybe a question for staff. Is that something that we can treat separately? In terms of the, the plan for that space? And that council still approves what's needed for the PUD, or?
That is a new one for me, I'm not going to lie. I would think that it would not hold up moving forward. I can, can clarify tomorrow with Dan Christ, city attorney, but I don't think it would hold it up.
Yeah, I would, I would be supportive of that as long as it doesn't hold up the process.
I, I totally agree. I, I think it would just be nice to see intent on paper at this point.
What if we made sure that it was included in what went to council and gave them the thumbs up? Rather than it coming back here, or, or do you definitely want us to?
No, I, I think that would be fine.
We could change the condition to say that that is incorporated into the package that goes to council.
So then they'd see it in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, is it would be a public document, then we'd see it in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah. It was good. You used it correctly. Bravo.
So then, did I hear that there's a, a friendly amendment, actually, maybe by the motion or to his own motion?
Yes.
That that plan for the green space be included with the packet that goes to the city council?
Sounds good.
Yes?
Yeah.
All right. And our secondor is, is comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready?
We are ready when you are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see. Cassia?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brayson?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes, that motion passes. All right. I have lost my agenda. Thank you. All right. Looking at the rest of the agenda for this evening, are there any administrative items to add?
I just wanted to be sure the public hearing was closed.
Did I not close the public hearing?
It was closed.
It was closed.
It was closed, okay. Just making sure.
Yeah, thank you. Good catch, Jordan, but thank you. Yeah.
Great.
I've so done that before. Thank you.
Great. So really just, well, yay, first of all, for, for passing that motion. I'll say that. Secondly.
Yay, you.
So really, the only other thing on the agenda was we had administrative item, which was to welcome our new sustainability planner, Erin Quatell. So I'll let Erin come up and introduce herself, but we.
Could be my suggestion.
Yes, so we are really excited to have her on board, join the team. We also have an intern who's not here, but so.
Oh, great.
It is great with all of the projects that you're seeing, that we get some extra eyes and some input. So I'll let Erin do most of the speaking, but we're really excited to have her join, so.
And it sounds like Councilwoman Piana is already itching to talk to you about street infrastructure. Some things that were slightly outside of our purview tonight, but will certainly be on council's agenda in terms of expenditures and priorities, so welcome.
Thank you. I'm Erin Quatell. I just started last Monday, so I'm pretty new here. Prior to this, I was working at OHM Advisors, which is a AEP firm. And then prior to that, I was getting my Masters of Public Administration in Environmental Science and Policy. So I'm just really happy to be here. I've always wanted to be in government, and Ferndale seems like a great place to be. So I'm really excited to work with everyone and kind of get started.
Ferndale is a great place to be.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Is this your first weekday?
It's my fifth week, maybe.
Fifth day, second? Okay, wonderful. Well, you haven't run away yet. Great.
Nope, not yet.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then, with that, unless there are any items from the commission? We shall adjourn before nine o'clock. We'll adjourn, I mean, at eight fifty-six PM.
Nice.
I think, like, somehow the universe knew that I'd had a really rough day. I tried to do.